Well, it's five o'clock. Let's, uh...
You want to start?
Go ahead and start. I think we've got one more board member coming in, so we'll just... I'm sure he'll get with the program soon as he gets here. We'll have a roll call.
Philip Humbard.
Here.
Neil Helm.
Here.
Jay Piercy.
Here.
Lisa Miller.
Here.
Lauren Shackelford. Supposed to be here. And Kiera Lures.
Here.
All right. Lauren was the one I was thinking is going to be here, but it might be a minute. Approval of the minutes. Has everyone had a chance to look at the minutes? All right. Take a motion to approve.
I'll motion to approve the minutes. Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. All in favor say yea.
Yea.
All opposed? The agenda. Has the agenda changed from what it was published? No? Okay. Anyone have a question of the agenda? As it's printed? All right. Take a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
All right, I got a motion and a second. All in favor say yea.
Yea.
What am I supposed to say?
Whatever you want to.
All right. All right, new business. First item of new business is a conditional use permit hearing for the Sherlin Berger RV Storage CUP, presented by Blake Chapman.
Good evening.
Yeah?
A conditional use permit has been applied for the Schulenberger RV Storage Facility due west of Tonnytown in the Tonnytown Planning Area off of Mustine Road. Approximately seven...
Pull that closer to you there.
Approximately seventeen acres in size. It calls for storage of about 100 RVs consisting of three long shotgun-style indoor RV storage units and 50 units outside on gravel parking lot for about 100 RV units. So, Mustine Road presently is a hard-packed gravel road running towards 412 West in Tonnytown, adjacent to the Tonnytown city limits. And the Springdale Northern Bypass is proposed to cut in right in front of the property. Pictured our frontage towards 412 East and going south on Mustine. Subject property facing northbound towards Tonnytown and also southeast towards a proposed retention pond. The applicant is here to answer any questions you may have.
Anyone have any questions of staff before we go to the applicant or the audience? Might have a question. This is just storage. There's no...
There will be some servicing of vehicles such as winterization.
Okay. There is... There's no...
But not general maintenance.
Okay, I don't see any kind of structure. It's just fenced-in yard is all it is?
It's not fenced in. They'll be providing some screening to the south. And there is well-established pine trees to the frontage of Mustine on the west side.
Okay. Anyone else have a question, Blake?
Why did this have to come before this board?
Because it requires... It's a large-scale development and also it needs a conditional use permit for the development and operation of a storage facility.
Is this in the Tonnytown Planning District?
Yes, sir, it is. And they have chimed in along with Tonnytown Fire Department in technical review stage.
Okay. Did they bring up any issues that they wanted to see happen, or what?
They made proposals about improvements to Mustine that would extend from the proposed improvements from ATHD to the building entrance and also ensuring that there is screening to the south side to maintain compatibility with existing residential and agricultural uses.
Okay. Has the drainage been engineered, or what?
It has. They provided a first and second round in technical review phase and also in re-submittal regarding the proposed retention pond and V channels to divert water.
Okay. Did any other person have a comment at technical review that was consequential?
Largely no. The county engineer does want further information about fire standards and... and... Not fire, I'm sorry. The county engineer wants to know more about drainage issues and they submitted further comments today. So, the applicant hasn't had time to further address those.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. State your name and address and who you are, I guess.
Hi, my name is Renee Bybee. My address is 207 East Center Street, Prairie Grove. I'm with Red Wings Consulting. My client, Mike Schulenberger, proposes actually 48 enclosed RV storage units with 14 open-covered storage units and 40 to 60 outdoor spaces. I think Blake said 50 outdoor spaces and maybe some more enclosed than we actually have. This is in the Tonnytown Growth Area. Tonnytown does not regulate development outside of their growth area, but they did go ahead and comment. That's all I have.
Would anyone else from the audience like to comment on this project? All right, seeing no comments, I'll bring it back to the board. Any comments or questions of the applicant? Did we have any letters of opposition?
No letters of opposition. One call in favor of support today.
Okay, thank you.
From the property owner due west.
With that, I'll take the pleasure of the board here.
I move to approve the Schulenberger RV Storage CUP.
I'll second that.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. We'll continue on with land development hearings. The first item was the pre-LSD for this same project, so...
Thank you. It's the exact same story as I mentioned previously. The development is, I believe, 17 acres, more or less?
Yes, sir. 17.21, I believe.
17.21 acres. It is adjacent to industrial zone property in Tonnytown. It's close to 412. And planning believes that it is a compatible use.
Okay. I noticed that the agenda says 19.2, but it's just 17.2?
That's my dyslexia.
Oh, okay.
17.2.
Any question? Applicant have any thing you'd like to add to this?
No, sir.
All right, back to the board.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion that we approve the Schulenberger RV Storage Pre-LSD as presented.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed? On to the next item.
Mr. Chair, may I... When is the quorum court meeting for the conditional use permit?
Wouldn't know.
I'll get back with you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is the replat of Lot 11, River Ridge South subdivision.
Thank you. This is simply a two-tracked split consisting of about 12.5 and 3.65 acres, more or less. Served on a unpaved private road. There are no technical concerns registered. Soil looks like it's good for septic. And no concerns from neighbors.
Is... Not that it matters, but is this split for a sale, a land sale, or is it just same?
I believe the property owner...
Okay.
You are the property owner?
No, sir. Andrew Farman, Dan's last office.
I knew that. Okay.
No, it's strictly just to sell off. There's two houses there currently.
Okay.
And I believe they're wanting to split off that western tract.
So, it's effectively a family tract split.
Okay. Then... Neil's question, why did we have to listen to him?
Because it's subdivided and per ordinance, it has to appear before us.
Even if it's over three acres?
Even if.
Okay.
Is there any concern or really anything we're supposed to be looking at in that the house on the, I guess, west doesn't have the driveways through the other lot to access the home? If I'm reading that right?
Did that mean there was too many splits in it already? Not that I know of. Why did he say so divided?
Are you saying there's been... The required number of splits have already been made on the property and this exceeds it, or?
No, sir.
Why then? It's a five and it's greater than a five and greater than a one on the splits, or what?
Well, this isn't necessarily a minor subdivision. This is simply a lot split in a pre-plated subdivision.
Oh, it's in a planted subdivision, is what?
Okay.
Right. So, all of the projects coming up are in planted subdivisions.
Okay.
Makes sense then.
Thank you. Thank you.
My apologies.
All right. All right, any questions of the applicant or the staff? All right, back to the staff, I mean to the board here. Oh, yeah, sorry, forgot the public. Does anybody in the public like to make a comment, or? All right. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board now. Got to keep me honest here.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the request as per staff.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? Seeing none? Thank you, it's approved. All right, let's see. The next one is the replat of lots 167A and 168A, Weddington Woods, Unit 1 subdivision.
Thank you. This is a relatively straightforward lot split consisting of about 2.9 and 2.16 acres off to the east of 265 and Hogaye to the south. There's been no registered technical comments or concerns. The soil is appropriate for septic. And we received neighbor notification from four property owners on one letter concerned about the division of this being incompatible with the other planted lots which are at least five acres in size. They're concerned that this will be a precedent for the other undeveloped lots to be split. Whoa, 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 whoa. Guys, I completely lied to you. That's another page. I... That dyslexia bit me again. Strike that neighbor concern. This is a lot line adjustment between neighbors on White Oak Lane. It's an asphalt road. There's no technical concerns. The soil is good for septic. And there's been no comments from neighbors. My apologies again.
And this is for the replat of Lot 167A and 160?
167A and 167B, Weddington Woods.
What did the lot line adjustment change exactly?
Very little. It's an agreement between two neighbors adjoining. And it's just a little bit of give and take, a little bit of tit-for-tat between the property line.
Usually we see the original and then how the lines have been...
Right.
Oh, we can, okay.
So, yeah, there's a hash and it basically goes northeasterly in a very straight line. And it looks like they're proposing a little jut-off to the west that would grow 167A a little bit.
I must be looking at the wrong one here.
This is the one previous.
Oh, okay. There. My dyslexia got me there. All right, any questions? Did we make a... Any applicant have anything?
No, sir. Happy to point me out. If you guys didn't help anything, they can look out. I believe that that line is shown. About the center of the split. We're just moving it over just a little bit up and super substantial. I'll have any questions?
Okay. Sounds good. Okay, anyone in the audience need to comment on this or would like to? All right, seeing no comments from the audience. Anyone have any questions of the staff or the applicant? All right. Take a motion then.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the replat of lots 167A and 168A, Weddington Woods subdivision as presented.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
On to the next item.
Thank you kindly. This is a replat of Tract 2 in the Skyview 2 subdivision. It's a lot split of about 2.9 and 2.1 acres, more or less, to the east of 265 South and Hogaye. There's been no registered technical concerns. The soil analysis states it's suitable for septic. And we received neighbor notifications today concerned about the split being significantly smaller than the five, six acres as typical in the subdivision and concerned about it being precedent for the other undeveloped tracks to then be split.
All right, anything else, Blake? Anybody have a question, Blake? All right, the applicant?
Tim Westwood, Atlas Professional, answering.
How many lots are in this particular subdivision?
Well, you've got the original Skyview. I'm not for certain how many lots are in that subdivision. This is Skyview 2. The original subdivision flat has, I believe, seven. But some of those tracks have been split since.
Okay, well, that was kind of my... That was going to be my second question. Have any of those been split?
Yeah, so Skyview 2 has actually eight tracks in it.
Okay.
And some of those have been split since.
What's the smallest track that you see that's been split into?
Five acres here, but I do not know since. Yeah, it's five at some time.
So, they were larger than five acres and they've been split down to five acres?
They started out as five and now there are some less than five.
Okay. Anybody have any questions, Mr. Tim? All right, anybody from the audience would like to say something? Okay, come up to the... Okay, come up to the podium and state your name and address and...
John Damsel, 14286 Skyview West Road. I'm here because I believe we're not really happy about this. I bought my property in five acres. As far as I know, everyone else has five acres. Right. Or more. And that's the reason I moved here. So, if he splits his property, then I'm... We're going to... I'm only interested in the houses all around me. And I'm really not good at here.
Part of my concern is this is the county or... The county allows things to be split down to one acre, you know, in our rules. And this is considerably more than one acre. So, it's... As long as there's no technical concerns, we have a hard time denying a lot split that of somebody that owns a piece of property. You know... I don't know what else to say about that. It's just very difficult to...
Do you find out about the covenants of the property?
Yeah. That would be a legal matter and you could take it to court, you know. But as far as covenants, we don't enforce covenants and this board does not.
I did that the covenants. So, the original covenants, I believe, were from 1977. And then they filed a revision in 1986 which states there should be no covenants.
So, they did away with the covenants and...
In 1986, they've done away with the covenants against Skyview 2. I don't know about the original status.
Okay. So, I don't know where you might go to a remedy on that. You know, if there was covenants, you could probably fight it a little more. Anybody else from the audience like to speak? Okay, bringing it back to the board then.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the request as per staff comments.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes. All right. If you want to appeal it, you can go to the, uh, this, this...
Circuit clerk.
Circuit clerk. You won't go to the, to the quorum court?
No, it's, it's on the CUP.
Okay. Circuit clerk would be the place to do that. Anyway. On to other business. Blake, you want to go over other business?
Nothing to report.
Okay.
Thank you.
Looks like the next... Looks like the next, uh, board meeting is on June ninth. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And then, and then July fourteenth. All right, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved. Oh, in a second, I'm sure.
Second.
All those in favor, stand.